Let's call this meeting the Upsher County Board of Education Order. Our first order of business is to stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the clerk note that all members are present, we move on to the approval of the agenda. Do you have any adjustments?
I do. In your agenda, item 11, I'd like to delete the item of the Innovation Zone Grant Application from Buchanan Upsher High School. That does not take anything away from the other two Innovation Zone Grants, but we found that there was a little bit of conflict between the two grants and competing for the same dollars. So since they were similar, very, very similar programs, we wanted to go with the county level programs. So we'd like to pull that off at this particular time. And then there are some additional items and strike-throughs on Attachment F under Personnel. And that has been placed in front of you. Also, under that same Attachment F on the back page, there is a list of West Virginia Wesleyan College Clinical Students, Student Teachers, and Nursing Students.
Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll move on to item five, which is announcements, acknowledgements, and highlights.
First, an announcement. As you know, we had our annual convocation today, and it was a pleasure seeing all 550 employees gather in one place and are ready for the new school year. It was an exciting morning that I thoroughly enjoy being with those folks. And they spent the rest of the day working and staffs going over new changes and new policies, and I think it was a good day. But the major announcement is, school starts Thursday. So that is a full day of instruction, and I know that all the students that are here with us tonight just can't wait. Looking forward to getting up early. We will be serving breakfast and lunch. It'll be a full day. All the buses will be running regular schedule, and I would hope that the community will be aware that their little ones will be out at the bus stops early in the morning and take extra care as they're driving. Also like to introduce to you once again Deputy CJ Day. CJ will be joining the ranks at Buchanan Upsher Middle School as our pro-officer, and we'd like to welcome him to Upsher County. Thank you CJ. And then the other announcement is actually a brief presentation from last year's Youth Leadership Institute. If you're a member of this board, supported a group of high school students to go through a leadership, a governmental leadership academy whereby they went to several different governmental agencies, and they're here tonight to give us a report on that. So I'm not sure who the spokesperson is, Mr. Edwards. He'll start it off.
What I want to do before we get started, because I promised Mr. Lampin that I would make this as short and brief as possible, you guys have known me very well. What I have here is a little bit of a swag bag that we were given, that we gave out to all of the students who attended. All 13, I might add, that enrolled in the class, graduated the class, and attended every class. As review, if you want to pass those down and take a look, that'd be fine. As a reminder, it was a six-week course. Every Wednesday, we had the children come out to a different governmental function. Right in the middle of it, we had a break, which of course was spring break. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight, Madam President, members of the board, guests, to introduce you to these four, and to give you a brief idea of what we did, and to thank a lot of the people that helped out in this program. As you may be aware, there were a lot of governmental institutions that were involved in this, so it was a real collaborative between not only the Board of Education, but these different entities. So first of all, I want to thank our committee who pulled all of this together, and it was the, of course, the Youth Leadership Institute Committee. We couldn't have done any of this without them. Of course, that would be Amanda Hayes, David Taylor, Ron Q, Michael Cowherd, who fortunately for us supplied pizza every week after school for these kids to eat afterwards, of course, us. Matt Kerner, Keith Nichols, and Mary Aubaugh. I also want to make sure we thank the Board of Education for your support with us, and of course, Mr. Lampin and Mr. Wilmeth. They were the first week to meet with these folks and sit down, and had a long discussion, about two hours, of all the different policies and procedures that they do for the schools. So I think that was really fantastic opportunity. Also want to thank the County Commission, Donnie Tenney, Willie Parker, for their presentations. Also want to thank the City of Buchanan, Mayor Davidson, and Michael Doss for their presentations. Matt Gregory also, at a later date, presented with us. The Airport Authority, when we were out there, Dick Bennett, and the Lifeflight Crew. The Developmental Authority of Mr. Foster, who also gave a little lecture. The County Courthouse with Judge Caddell and Sheriff Miller. And West Virginia Wesleyan College for all their support that you see, some of that. We couldn't have done any of this with, of course, country roads transit. You might have been aware that if the kids didn't have transportation after school, they were providing the transportation to each one of these events. So without them, a lot of this could not have happened also. And of course, I want to thank our participating students. I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves. They are your youth ambassadors by proclamation, as you see, and I'm going to ask them to just tell you one thing that they really enjoyed about the class, and if they'd like to see it, continue. So ladies and gentlemen.
I'm Dan Anulte, and I learned a lot about our county and how it works. I just learned a lot about the county and like how the school system works and how everything functions.
Thank you, Daniel.
I'm Megan Boomer, and I really enjoyed the Week Five, which was the courthouse and the tour, and when Judge Caddell spoke, and the sheriff, and the chief of police, and I really think this program should be continued.
I'm Lizzie Edwards, and I enjoyed the first week, which was Mr. Lampin and Mr. Wilmeth, because it gave you an insight on the school system that as students you don't really like think about, and it's like, some of that stuff has to happen, you don't like it, but it makes sense.
Hi, I'm Chris Eddy, and I don't think there was a week out of this whole entire program that I didn't thoroughly enjoy, especially considering that I am going to go into the legal system as an adult. And so I really got hands-on information about the government, everything from small-town government to school government. And all in all, I learned more in this six weeks than I think I could have learned in any college class or any high school class. And I absolutely think this program should be continued, without a doubt. It was a really phenomenal program.
Thank you. Amanda, did we happen to do the, I thought while we were going to talk, we were going to give you an idea. Each week, we took pictures, of course, with all the kids, with each one of the presenters, and I thought if we could go ahead and put that up while I'm discussing a little bit of the other. Now, as you realize, there's a huge collaborative there of each of the governmental entities, and I want to make sure I thank them again for participating and volunteering their valuable time for us, particularly Judge Caddell, Chief Gregory, Sheriff Miller, the mayor, the city treasurer. We couldn't have done any of that without them. If you'd like to take a look behind this, as I mentioned a minute ago, our session one was with Mr. Lampin and Mr. Wilmeth. They were both in an hour each in our two-hour time period. Then our second was. I would also like to remind you that all 13, that is the first week there, we sat in the auditorium and had a really nice roundtable discussion, and all the kids got an opportunity to participate. The second week, we had, where was that? That was at City Hall. There's a little statue jumping in there, right? You know, two hours, I didn't realize, two hours is a pretty long time, perhaps, to sit down at a table. So luckily, not halfway through, we had the kids sat at all of that. Session two was with the mayor, and was with Michael Doss, the treasurer. They both very, very welcoming with the kids and asked a lot of questions, but they gave us a whole lot of insights of the city government and how that works for the schools and for kids. Our third week, there's a picture of another, and Michael Doss. You see a couple of our fellow adult ambassadors there, Ron Q, David Taylor. They were instrumental in going through this program. Of course, they're all there, but, oh, there I am with the picture anyway. Our third session was with J.C. Rafferty and Donnie Tenney. As you know, those gentlemen can give you a lot of information, but I think the progression from city to the county government was really ideal on that. Mr. Parker came in along last, gave us a tour of the place, and gave us an idea of what the county administrator does. Right there, there at the magistrate court, in that picture right there. Then we went down into the title document area. Title, records, and stuff. Then we got to see some old 1800 deeds and property transfers in there, so you can see how long that's been going on. Session four was at, out at the airport. That was our Lifeflight instructor, who gave us an idea, a little bit about Lifeflight, and what all they do, and how important it is for Upsher County and our community. Dick Bennett also gave us all a tour of the facility, and gave us an idea of what exactly and how important our airport is to our area and our community. I think a lot of us might forget, the airport is now one of the cornerstone to our community and our office of March. Session five, we're all wanting to take a ride, as you can see, it was a little chilly that day. Session five, of course, was Judge Caddell. He gave us a lot of information on what it is that the judicial system does here in Upsher County, as you, almost, if you're all aware. He gets to deal with a lot of the fine stuff in the county. There they are, in his courtroom. He could have been more hospitable to us and answered more questions, and as you might notice, all 13 of our students were there then. We did have one homeschool student with us, that was the one on the far right, and that was Randy Rivers. Of course, our own, very own Chief Gregory was there, and he gave us an idea of how his work goes through the community, and with our, what he looks for in particular with the U.S. And I'm going to guess that we actually, not actually, no, no. And that gave me an idea, a little bit, of the dates that we did this, and I apologize for not coming to you earlier, but this summer for me, I don't know about y'all, but we will keep going back. By the time I can pull everybody together, I can come to give this review for you and to this point. Thank you for that, Amanda. So as you can see, everybody was smiles there. I think everybody had a really good time. The two hours seemed to be very conducive for it. What we're looking for now, we have already had discussions with Mr. Lampin and Mr. Wilmeth on how perhaps we can continue this program. What would be an ideal way to do civics at this level for our high school students, and perhaps even for the middle school at some point? It would be our idea to do it two times a year. That way, because we lost a lot of the students that we would have had in the springtime for sports that were there, and then, of course, vice versa, the spring sports kids couldn't make it for the fall sports. So we would like to do it two times a year. Or do a year-long club type, where for three weeks, you discuss what it is each one of those different entities does, and then that final week, that's when you go to the City Hall, and then you might have a little bit, or they might have a better idea of how that area functions, and they might have more questions in that, be able to kind of tie it all together. I'm afraid that the information that we gave them during these presentations might have been a little overwhelming, as you might imagine. There's a lot of things there that youth, or that our youth may not understand as far as taxation, and a lot of the different paperwork, and the structure of government, so. With that, unless you have any other questions, or any of the students would like to say anything? Amanda Hayes, would you like to mention anything?
Yes.
Let me make sure in my notes, I have covered everything, and thanked everybody I need to thank on that. I did do that, and if I might, have two minutes after they are dismissed to discuss the pool runs for the first act. Or just an overview, I'm not going to discuss it, just to tell you a little bit about that. But if you're done with them, or if you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Just pulling, just want to say something.
Okay. Absolutely.
She's got it.
Okay. Yes, I participated in this program this past spring, and I just, I really enjoyed everything that came and was offered through this program. Anytime you can connect our high school and have Wesleyan come in and help set up a program like this, it's definitely a positive influence on our students, and thank you for allowing this pilot program this past year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to mention also, I was also involved in another program this year, and of course, Mr. Lampin and the board gave us permission to use Academy and beginning the middle school, that's bus stops, during the pool runs this summer. I got to tell you, I haven't got the numbers on that yet, but it turned out to be a great success, a very viable idea for every summer for those kids who may not have transportation to the swimming pool each year. I do know that the Stockard numbers were high, and I do know that also the Housing Authority was involved and was very high. So again, another collaboration between not only the Board of Education, but the Housing Authority, the City of Buchanan, and Stockard, New Jersey. So as you can see, I'm involved in trying to tie a lot of things together as far as collaborative issues with governmental entities, and I hope that will continue. Next year, we hope to expand that program a little bit even farther. Perhaps we can hit southern Upsher County, where some of those kids have a little bit more difficult time with transportation to the swimming pool. So with that, if you have any questions for me from that, I appreciate your time, and thank you for your support in all our endeavors.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Our facilities update, Mr. Moran.
I'll start with the smaller things, and then I'll deal with the bigger ones again. As far as appearances of the schools, you'll look around and see that that's been progressing and should be completed by tomorrow. Washington District was done today, and frankly, should be the last one, and that'll be hit tomorrow. We should be done and squared away, hopefully, for the most part, but maybe just some minor details for the outsides. The gym floors are completed, and I believe, or at least practicing on it now, at least at the middle school, and hopefully tonight at the high school, they should have been able to start. Driver's ed course is completed, except for, we've got to get the arrows and lines down, that's on order, and one of the nice things that is going to occur is we'll have those burning. We're getting, because of our pricing system with the state, we can get the arrows and the, you know, yield signs and those types of things burned in, and that'll only enhance the driver's ed courses opposed to us going out and freelancing it. The treatment plant was completed at Union, and it's functioning. So that's a good sign, considering school starts two days. The paint list, I'll have a completed one and update you at the next meeting, so you can see all of what the paint crew did for the summer. It's an enormous amount, and I asked Dale Morgan to go ahead and create the list, and I'll present to you then. And then I was asked about the state, the Tree Initiative Program that we utilized, and I'll update you for the next meeting on that, because I have to update the state here in the next couple of weeks on that, to let them know what we're doing as well, so it'll all go hand-in-hand and tie in. The hedges that you'll notice, the high school are gone, completely removed. We're still doing some of the dress-up and cleanup, and that'll probably take till the end of the week, if not the first of the next week, and then hopefully we'll have the bigger ticketed item in place by the time that first home football game runs around. And then I'll add this last one in. One of the things that we added at the middle school and the high school this year are two at the high school and one at the middle school, which are water fountains. And I may sound a little corny to you, but what we did, what it is, is actually a refillable station. There are two refillable stations in the commons area at the high school and one in the middle school cafeteria. So those are students that carry, you know, a normal water bottle, or a stainless steel water bottle, or a staff member, or anybody in the building, can just go right up to it, fill up, walk out. And hopefully that'll start to take our, you know, footprint down with recyclable materials and plastic bottles going around. And then on to the MIP. That's the big one that everybody, including myself, stay up and wonder what's going on. The four schools have been completed, which are obviously, again, French Creek Rock Cave, Tenerton, and Union. We're still working out some of the punch lists and trying to rectify those situations as quickly as we can, and hopefully without any inconvenience. We're still going to have some, but we'll get them knocked out accordingly. Academy and Washington were started as of yesterday. They're working in here tonight and whatnot. They'll be working basically four days a week, 10-hour shifts. And they'll do everything that they can before they rip stuff out. They'll work above the ceiling. That way, they don't have to go ahead and put stuff back in, they can just slide a piece of tile back in and get out. So when we get to that point where we're going to be ripping and tearing, it'll be uneasy at times, but we'll be squared away the best we can. And the contractors have spoken for the most part, without talking to Mrs. Skidmore yet in direct because of her busyness, but we have talked to Mrs. Hall at Washington, so she knows the schedule, and she knows directly who she needs to speak to, so that they're aware of exactly what's going on, what to expect during the school time. And I think that's it for the head of us.
Keith, you said four 10s. Would you share with the board what those shifts are going to be?
Yeah, the four 10s will be evening, so they'll come in at 4:00, and they'll basically work till 2:00.
Thanks. Most will be out. We may still have a few, but we won't have the contractors anywhere near that we have the children. And if they are in an area where we typically have them, then we would move the kids and make sure that everybody's, but that will limit some of the evening programs, but usually what they'll do is they'll work on the schedule with the principals, like I said, to move in different areas where we don't have contractors.
And our buses here, last bus is in the park, so if they're starting to work, we'll pass them.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Moran? Thank you, Keith.
If I may, under the facilities update, we've talked the last couple of meetings about pulling that property committee together. We spoke with the surveyor again. We're still anticipating those maps that we talked about, so that we can pull that committee together and get moving on that. They still haven't been, we don't have them yet. We also want to make sure that we have all our vocational education teachers on board at the Buchanan Upsher High School, because they're going to help us with that development. We're starting to talk with some other folks about maybe expanding that committee, some of the things we talked about early on. So that will, we anticipate that happening. We're very hopeful within the next two weeks, getting that committee going, so that we can make some decisions there.
All right, we'll move on to financials. George, do you have anything you want to share?
The only thing on the agenda is a couple miscellaneous budget supplements for some small grants that we've gotten for the county.
Does your question, if we accept the financial items as presented?
Affirmative.
Second? Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll move on to the consent agenda, which is the lease agreement with Fred Everly.
This is an annual agreement that we have with Fred Everly. They, as you know, we have our alternative education program in that building behind Fred Everly, and this is just that agreement, to be able to use that building to continue it out there. We'll tell you that some minor and some maintenance things were taken care of this summer that we had some concerns about, so that building is ready to go to start the school.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Who was the second? I think I'll, I think, yes.
I made the motion, Tammy, second.
We'll move on. We have the third reading and approval of the revised policy 4003, which is the attendance, and that's Attachment C.
That policy's been out for the required number of readings and comments. We've received no comments on it. As you know, the only change in that is we're taking out the section that deals with the exam policy at Buchanan Upsher High School, because they've changed their policy there.
So I guess we will approve that. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We go on to item 10, which is the dropout prevention Innovation Zone Grant, acres.
Provided you with a brief summary to help you review the grant. I'll leave this here at the front. This is the support page and a copy of the entire grant. Mr. Lampin had sent an email earlier this afternoon with the completed revised grant. I want to start off by thanking our committee, who's spent countless hours working, looking at data, making this possible. That's groups from our middle school, high school, community members, that have taken a real active role in this, so I really appreciate all the time that's went into it. I'm also really excited to say that today after convocation, when we had the faculty meeting with the middle school and high school, we didn't get the results until this afternoon, but both schools unanimously voted to accept this dropout prevention grant. So that, to me, speaks volumes. So we're very pleased with that as well. The summary page, and that's what I'll just highlight a few of those key points, and then if you have questions, please ask, and we'll give you the clarification. But the project vision of this grant is to illustrate the connection with destination graduation that we promoted all over board meetings throughout the county. And as you remember, that was created back in the summer of 2011 from our guidance department at Buchanan Upsher High School, and is now a county-wide initiative. And it's helping to increase the awareness of the dropout prevention, and having our students graduate thus earn a high school diploma. It also couples with our public forums that we started last year and will continue to have this year. We actually have our first meeting scheduled for next week to start looking at a September forum, to see if we can get one planned in time for the September. Our goal is to have for this upcoming year, to continue that discussion with our community and our schools, to look at the needs that we have, so we can better address those. And it also highlights that through our vision, that we do have several programs already in place in our school system. But the one area that we found that we really focused in on this grant was connectedness in the school climate. That's where the data was leading us to, as you reviewed the data. The goal is to improve the school climate at our middle and high school, and to increase our graduation rate by 2% yearly. And we feel that is a goal that is attainable with what we're hoping to achieve here. The key features, we'd be hiring a full-time dropout prevention coordinator, who will help facilitate dropout forums, work with our staff, all the stakeholders involved, work with key advisory groups, setting up different advisory groups to look at what changes do we need to make within the school. So they'll be completely focused on that dropout prevention, talking directly with the students, the staff of both schools. Then there's two waivers that we're going to apply for through this grant. They both are connected with policy 2510, and our first recommendation was to add an undecided career path. And this would allow for those students who decide to switch their, from professional to skilled, would give them that opportunity in their major to explore other areas, and it wouldn't jeopardize them or put them behind in their graduation date. The other policy waiver that we asked for is a waiver with the 8100 instructional minutes to give us some flexibility as we're pulling these students out to work in these committees, that they wouldn't be penalized for not having that 8100 minutes. And then the vision and the needs assessment, as Mr. Lampin stated today in convocation, we have made strides with our dropouts. We have went from 82 back in '09-10 to 61 last year. So we have made a huge, we're making a big impact, but we know we still have further to go, and we're hoping that this grant can help us get even further with that reduction. It is linked to the strategic plans of both schools and the county strategic plan with its graduation goal related to increasing the graduation rate and identifying and supporting our at-risk students. We talked a little bit before, when we talked about this grant, about our data and what really jumped out at us with our 2010-11 data from the state, and that's where we were ranked at 6 to 7.4 with our graduation rate, which was the lowest in West Virginia. We knew, we have to. We knew we have to continue to work in this area. And our dropout rate was 3.7, the third highest in the state, with the dropout average at 2.2. Again, we've made significant strides and I'm very pleased where we are. But I have high expectations of where we're going to go with this. We use national research statistics to support the need for the students to be connected to school and also through the frontline network, the ABC, which is your attendance behavior. And class failures, that data was also reviewed and will be a big part of this grant. We gave you section four, which outlines our objectives and activities. So if you have questions as you look through that. The full grant will be submitted as soon as we get our full signatures. We're asking you for your support. There's a document that we'll have to have signed. And our deadline for electronic submission is August 31st. So we're right on track. And we've been in consultation with the state representative also, who's given us some guidance as we've moved forward with this. Any questions? Mr. Law is looking at me.
Sometimes we're down now, it's considered worse than anyone else. We were lower than them.
That's 2010-11?
Yeah, that's history. That's best, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add that I'm just very excited and thrilled. And I think it's fantastic that the faculty, as large as they are, well over 60 at Buchanan Upsher Middle School and well over 80 at Buchanan Upsher High School, all see the need for this and voted to support this grant unanimously. I just think that's very, very telling that they're very supportive and want to do something different and want to try something. So I commend your staff and the high school staff and the committee that's worked so hard on this.
There's a lot of work going into it. I really appreciate that. So do I hear a motion to approve the dropout prevention innovation zone?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Could you clarify the second one, please?
Mr. Law.
Thank you. All right, let's move on. The innovation zone grant for Union Elementary. Thank us.
Thank you for having us this evening. I have my team of teachers here with me. And they're going to help me describe the objectives of our grant. This is our continuation of what we've done before with the innovation zone grant that we currently have. And we've found that these practices have been very effective. And we're kind of expanding on what we're doing already with the genre of studies and designing our own curriculum at Union. And we've been working on this all summer as a school and as a leadership team. We have been just designing this. And one of the things that we're, it's called Union Eagle SOAR. And SOAR stands for Seeking Outstanding Achievements and Relationships. And we believe achievement, student achievement is the center of everything we do. But right next to that is that relationship that, between teachers and teachers and teachers and students and also our school relationship with community. That's very important and our stakeholders. So we're looking at the research based on Bill Daggett's rigor and relevance and the fact that what we teach needs to be relevant to our students because they're growing up in a completely different world than you and I grew up in and how we need to really address those differences. So we are, we are doing a few different things. And we're asking for a couple different waivers. But the two waivers, one is a state code and the other is a, let me go over that. And I believe you have this electronically. I have a couple of hard copies. The West Virginia Department of Ed policy allowing flexibility regarding our adopted textbooks to implement this program using other resources. And that's kind of what we're already doing now. We want a continuation of that. But additionally, we have asked for a state code waiver with our hiring practices. Within the next five years, we see the potential of many retirements at Union. We're hitting that, most of our teachers have been there a very long time. And so what we want to do is really protect the culture that we have in our school. And in that, we see a generation of teachers that have gone above and beyond. And that's just the way they've done things. And we want to protect that by adding just a few more things, not really changing the hiring practices, but adding a few more things that we really are looking for at our school. So that's what we're adding to our grant application. I'm going to ask my teachers to step in and kind of go over the objectives of our grant as they're written.
If you look at the first two objectives, we were fortunate enough over the summer to be a pilot program for a program called MyOn. And it's basically a reading program that allows students on any digital media to upload books and be able to read them if you would of sorts compared to like a Kindle, except it's, you know, based on levels that we as teachers could assess and that it moves them on levels based on how they're assessed at the end of reading a story. And the computer program automatically moves them on or gives them more books based on that current level. We were able to receive this free for the summer, being a pilot program. But of course, in order to continue, it is going to be a fee. So part of our grant was to be able to continue this. The program has actually improved itself to where you can download the books and they will be, they will stay on the devices, any type of multimedia devices. So we're looking at something handheld as part of our grant. And that way, the students don't have to have the internet at home, but they can take the devices with them and still be able to have the reading material, take the assessments and continually move on their level. We've also provided insurance for these devices as part of the grant because we all know that allowing our students to take those home could also provide for accidents.
They'll replace the Apple iPad two times for every single one that we buy. It can be replaced two times even, no questions asked, replaced two times.
No matter what happens to it. So basically, it's like giving a two chance, you know, opportunity when you take that home. But it also, like I said, the main point of that is it targets their reading level and gives them feedback and also either reassigns the current reading level they're on or advances them to the next. We also wanted to involve the community in this objective. And we decided that it would be important that we provide this program, these devices at our local libraries. So part of the grant is also providing a digital device, like an iPad, at the local library to be used in conjunction with their computer systems where students and parents can go log on to their reading program. So it wouldn't only be accessible to students at our school, but it'd be accessible to all students within our county or even other counties who use our library services. But we're generating, you know, we're trying to hit all students because we're looking at those literacy components.
We were fortunate this summer to be able to attend the Model Schools Conference in Florida. And there we deepened our understanding of the importance of rigor, relevance and relationships in teaching our students. And we learned how to teach students in such a way that we really promote the higher level thinking skills from Bloom's taxonomy and to move our students from just a knowledge-based learning into what they call the quadrant D, which is where the students are not only taking what they've learned and applying it, but also being able to apply it in a new and different way and maybe an unexpected, solve unexpected problems. And to further this aim, our second goal is to provide relevance in our learning activities for the students through the use of quadrant D learning and real-world application through career and college readiness. And so one component of our grant, in the second objective, is to further promote the, and use the LEGO system of learning in our classrooms. Several of our teachers were trained in Florida in several components of the LEGO education program, such as Build to Express, where after you've taught a concept, the students can use a little LEGO set to build a model of what they've learned or what their reaction to, their reaction to what they've learned. We also learned how to use the LEGO kits to promote storytelling and writing, to understand better what they've read and to be able to tell their story through the LEGOs and then be able to write it. At our Innovation Zone Academy last week, we were trained by Jenny Nash. Our whole staff was from Marshall University in the LEGO Robotics Program. And we're going to start that this year at our school through the Innovation Zone Grant that we are using this year. But we would like to extend these opportunities to our students to deepen their learning. And that's our second objective. Our next objective is to use campus visits to expose children to further career opportunities that await them and to be able to take that story that they're envisioning for themselves a step further and allow them to create a vision of themselves attending a college of their choice. And so we'd like to start and take every grade level to a different college and have them experience some different experiences there so that they will be able to feel comfortable in the college environment and be able to know that they can attend college because it's important that we prepare them for a future where lots of times the jobs that we tend to think about preparing our students for will not even exist by the time that they get finished with college. And so we need for them to be career-ready and prepare our students for non-routine jobs, those kinds of jobs that are going to exist in the future. And through this opportunity, we already have, of course, some passion with West Virginia Wesleyan. But we'd like to extend that to Glenville and Fairmont State, WBU and Shepherd and some of the other, a lot of the other colleges in the state and establish mentorships. And students will have some enrichment opportunities through those college visits. The last part of this objective is to be able to do home visits for our students, having a home visit extravaganza that would happen at the beginning of school. I know several other counties or several other schools in the county are having home visits this year. And I remember a time when that was routine for all of us to go on home visits to see our students in their homes or to meet their parents and talk with them before school starts. And so that just extends our school-community relationship that's so important to making a successful education experience for our students.
I'm Megan Baycorn. I teach fourth grade. And the last objective that Susan talked about with relationships, that third goal, is developing relationships between the students, between the students and teachers, between the community as well. So one of the component, the last component, one of the last components of this grant is a service learning opportunity. And our students are very involved in our student council and they have community service. But we want to take it to the next level and have service learning to where there's a reflection piece. What have I benefited from doing this for someone else? And we thought of a population in our community that's very large and untapped, and that's our elderly in nursing homes. And so we wanted to foster some relationships in the nursing homes, have our students go and listen, have our students go and interview, have our students go and read and try and build a relationship that way. And that also kind of goes on our grant this year with collecting oral histories, honoring our veterans when we do our Veterans Day celebration. And we're preparing an old-time radio show so that getting to hear about, well, when I was young, you know, this is what happened. And having our kids, you know, kind of recreate what culture was like for others and understanding their own culture and how it's changed. Another facet of this, this part of the grant is the mentoring relationships. Mentoring relationships between, we wanted to invite high school students and middle school students. And I think this will go very well with destination graduation. We plan those visits on Fridays and Mondays so the kids wouldn't want to miss because they might miss my buddy that day. So helping with the dropout prevention rate, if we have some accountability between a high school student or a middle school student and their little union buddy. And that would be through reading relationships, math tutoring. And also helps the high school and middle school student build some confidence and know that they're being counted on in just a different capacity than academics. So we're wanting to foster those relationships and those cross-graded relationships will deepen more relationships and promote learning and positive role models in the community.
We have our community partner here, Joyce Harris Thacker and the FRN and Partners in Prevention. We do a lot of work with those two. And she's already signed on as our community partner. And in addition to that, we've been offered, and although it hasn't been formalized, we have been offered a partnership with Glenville State College as a professional development school. So we're very excited about supporting these goals and objectives in our grants and our initiatives that we're currently doing in with other activities such as Brooke Scott's. She just, we just learned that she received a $2,000 school garden grant. So we're very excited about that. And all of those things go right back to what we're talking about, these relationship-building activities that foster student achievement. So we look forward to your support in this grant competition. Thank you.
I just want to say thanks to all of you all that have put in the time and effort to do this. A lot of great things going on.
One question. We saw in the civics session here that there was one homeschooled student who participated in that. It struck me on the library that if there's reading to be done, they would, they could access the same reading at the library that your students would be doing.
Absolutely. And the term Bill Daggett used for it was anytime learning. And it's through an electronic device and these students can take it anywhere.
Do I hear a motion for approval of the innovation grant for Union? Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thanks. We move on to item 13, which is approval of the goals report for 2012-13.
After we had our workshop meeting, I went back and took all your comments and suggestions and notes. And I think I've encompassed those into this document. I did change the format a little bit to make it consistent with the one that we had last year. And these are, although our board goals are already in policy, these will be performance evaluations, kinds of things, indicators on how we're reaching those goals. I think they're very, very solid. I appreciate the board's input on them. As soon as they are approved, we will get them out to everybody and we'll start working on them. The innovation zone grants that we just heard about tonight, I think, fall right into our board expectations and board goals. We want to increase the graduation rate, reduce the dropout rate, and want to create a culture of relevance and rigor in our classrooms and enhance the community efforts and with the community. We have the one goal in here talks about the cultural significance in the individual schools and their communities, which Union has done and is continuing with this innovation zone. I think they're very good goals. I think you did a great job putting them together. I did add on there, as perhaps we didn't talk about at the workshop, that we will have a midterm, mid-year progress report and put that on annually and report to the board how we're doing with these.
Any comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the goals? Second?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll move on to the review and approval of the invitation to bid for vending beverages, and that's attachment E. Assuming everyone's had a chance to read that.
After our special meeting last week, of course, you directed us to create this document, and we've worked with Mr. Carver, Ms. Nusselrod, and Rebecca Tinder, worked very hard on creating this, making sure that it had all the components that we talked about, made it a very viable document that passes the legal muster. We did notice after we sent it out to you on Friday, we didn't get it completed until Friday. There are some typos and some issues in there that if indeed you choose to accept this, that we would like it to be accepted with the understanding that we'll clean those typos up and some, I think there's a couple of misspellings or grammatical errors that we want to go back to.
Consistency is title.
Yeah, and there's a date in there. It talks about having the bids returned August 12 or August 2012. Obviously, we need to change those. Mr. Carver, any comments?
Just that we, there were a couple of main points that need to be clarified. One, that the products that were being purchased could be sold through a vending machine on a commission basis or at the schools on a wholesale pricing basis. That the bids could be considered based on both the price of the product being offered and the amount of commission being offered by the vendor. There was one thing in the back about, it was a little bit confusing, about new products or equipment only and bid specifications. It was unclear as to whether that applied to just the product that was being delivered or to the vending machines that it was being sold in. So, we added some language that just said that the vending machines had to be a good working order at all times to separate that or segregate that product itself. So, I think we've addressed the main deficiencies in the original document. A lot of the.
Is there anything in there about the matrix that you all need to determine the bid of the winning bid?
The matrix is not really part of the bid process. It's a tool that you can use to evaluate it if the winner's not absolutely clear from the bids submitted. So, it's not really part of the bid process. It's just a way of evaluating the bids after you give them back.
Can you make that major part of the public offering when you do this?
Certainly, that can be reviewed by any of the vendors if you even have to use the matrix. Because, for instance, when we bid the last time, it was very, very clear between the beverage vendors, who was the winner. Because they both bid the same exact price for the product, and the difference was the amount of commission offered. There was no need to do a matrix because it was clearer than the winner's. So, the matrix is just used to quantify the things that you're looking at in the bid to determine.
I realize that, but it was a bone of contention the last time. Folks said they didn't know they were being evaluated on this matrix. So, if we're going to use a matrix or have the possibility of using a matrix, I wonder if it shouldn't be a part of this document so that we'll know if it's close, here's how we evaluate.
In one graph, we had percentages in there, and Ms. Tender thought that that kind of took away your ability to have your judgment in there, strictly a mathematical calculation, instead of having you have some judgment in on which better you wanted to select. So, we removed that to those percentages because it would have just made it a mechanical process rather than a judgment.
Maybe we don't need a matrix.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be needed in every case, only when there's a not a clear one, or if it's very, very close and you need to document how you arrived at the decision.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if we should include it in the document if in fact we may end up using one, so that everybody's clear that this is what we might use, here's how we determine it.
Would the change in the wording that we used, that we have under the evaluation of bids, help clarify a little bit on how or what we're looking at?
Yeah, the bid actually took some things out of the matrix.
Yeah, and the original document, that was a big bone of contention there.
Yeah, you have to meet that hurdle of submitting the bid and reading the bid specs before you're even considered to be a viable bidder. And so, really, you're just down to the price and the amount of commission. The third item is whatever's in the best interest of the board. So, it should be pretty clear who the winner is without going to take this.
Yeah, I took it when reading this, the change in that section on the evaluation of bid helped clarify a lot that we were, had a lot of discussion over in that last one.
Clearly, it's your document. If you must have a matrix as part of it, we certainly incorporate that.
Well, I don't really want a matrix to be part of it. I just think if we're going to use it, it should be part of it. If we don't make it part of it, then we shouldn't use it. And that's just the way I view it. It's unfair to folks who think that they're bidding and this is all they're going to be using, and then you throw out a matrix and they don't quite understand. It's obvious that one of the bidders didn't understand the matrix. So, I just don't think we should.
When they bid on this, do we share with them that there's that possibility that we do use a matrix? I mean, I don't know that it needs to be part of the invitation to bid, but is that information shared in any way?
I'm hopeful that the document is clear that when the bids come in, it will be clear who the winner is and who you need to deal with that.
I think Cynthia was hopeful that the last time, they put the bids out.
I have a question as far as, there isn't anything in that agreement discussing any kind of liability. I mean, do we ask vendors to sign a whole harmless agreement?
Is that in the state policy that they have to adhere to, that they have to provide? In order to be a business, they have to have the liability insurance?
That's a good question. I'm not sure if there's anything in there that says they have to provide proof of insurance.
That is a good question.
And that may be a good question that we need to take.
It's not in this document, but anytime we go to an outside contract or something, we always.
Do they sign a whole harmless agreement?
They'll submit an insurance or something. I don't know that we actually have a whole harmless agreement, but it's certainly something we probably should do.
That's something that I think.
Because anytime somebody steps on our front.
The school board should look into. They usually first, there's a copy of their liability.
Their liability insurance is what they.
We probably should add a statement.
But we can put that in here in the cover letter that goes out. Just add that statement.
Just add that in the cover letter, not necessarily have it in the.
Prove it's all right.
So, is everyone comfortable with that? Just add that statement in the cover letter?
Sorry. The typo changes and I don't know.
Just had one other question I noticed in our bids that we got previously, that the one bidder submitted photocopies of every label of every product that we were bidding and bidding on. The others didn't. And I noticed here in this bid document, it says that nutritional labels are required. Is that before or after we accept their bid? Should they be sending that in with their bid as the one bidder did, but the other did?
They should be sent in.
Pardon?
I think they should be sent in or we have the actual documentation of what that is. It's usually a common product that you can find that information. Most of the time, the labels are sent or the information is put in that form that's on there, and that's verified because it's usually a common product and else, just so you know.
Well, I like the way that one bidder sent that in. I think it verifies you exactly what they're giving you. It's the label itself. I wonder if we shouldn't require that actual photocopy of the label of the items you're selling. That way, there's no question, no typos.
Is that something we've gotten in the past from other vendors?
I think we have, but I don't know if it comes in with the bid or if it's after the bid is awarded as a verification if they're hitting the specs.
Well, it's not clear here when it's supposed to come in. They're supposed to submit it, but it's not really clear when. It just says standard bid conditions and doesn't really say whether they do that with the bid or if they get the bid.
It says just prior to the products being placed in the machines. So, would we address that?
Could you step up a little bit? Believe it or not, there's an air conditioner on.
Products change so often and the sizes they change. That's why Ms. Tender tried to make everything so tightened up in the specs when it was through there, because they could turn in, let's say, a six-ounce something product, and the vendors actually change, let's say Frito-Lay or whoever, whatever it is. The main requirement is it continually meets those state requirements that set forth in our policy of nutrition. So, basically, what they're doing is before they put it in, they sub-products sometimes. There's no way they could actually always turn it in. They have to make sure it requires, and that's why we have people go check the machines so often, and I have to go up and do reviews. But what they're turning in is their initial thing that they're bidding on, and the products sometimes change.
Don't they have to submit to you if it changes?
Yes, and it says.
Before they put it in there?
Yes. Well, what they normally do is they call me, or I'll call and say this, there was something at the middle school, let's say, that shouldn't have been there. And it was, sometimes it's just a little bit of a language. It's usually turned right around. And they normally, in the past, at least for what went in the machines at the high school, I would get a phone call or my secretary would, she would get out those laws. We would look at the ounces of fat, and we would say yes or no on that particular product.
So, you do it on as needed basis?
Well, you start out with the basic, what the bid is going to be, and then sometimes products do change, even just sizes. Or the state law changes, like we had a certain amount of juice that we could do, and then that changed and we could no longer keep that.
So, when do you get these nutritional labels?
They submit a bid package with their basic amount of what they're going to do, give their main products in pretty much specific categories, and then we look at that.
So, that is a good tactic.
Yes. Now, they probably.
The calculator on the state.
Yeah, and I have suggested that. They can actually take that label and go to the state website and calculate, put in the ounces, and it will tell them whether it's a good or a bad immediately. And we usually have a parent volunteer try to be checking those along with me to make sure what we have meets those requirements.
And this bid response form, it has all the things to make up list for the products and what's in there.
That's in lieu of the label?
Well, or you can submit the label, but all that information has to be.
Now, this is the standard bid condition, either we're going to do it on every bid or not, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't say in place that you can do that in lieu of.
Well, they have to provide proof that the product meets the specifications.
And the label would be the best thing to do that, along with the written. That must be why they have that written as well as submit the label. That way, it can be verified.
But either way, you can determine whether they've specified.
And if I understand it right, what Ms. Nusselrod said is when they submit this, even it could change before they bring the product to the machine because there may be substitutions or changes from their vendors, so. But we do have checks in place to cover that, right? Any other questions? So, do I hear a motion to approve the bid document with all corrections and include in the cover letter the statement? Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. That was a quick turnaround for that, very quick turnaround. We'll move on to personnel, attachment F. Had a chance to look at the updated copy that was given to you. And do I hear a motion that we approve those personnel items as requested?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we move on. We have a second set of personnel issues.
And I wish to make a statement. I, Alan Suter, recuse myself from any discussion or voting procedures due to personnel issues with bidding.
We acknowledge that Mr. Suter has accused himself of discussion on personnel for attachment G. Let's left the ring. We have personnel issues for attachment G.
Most of them do approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Before they leave, Dr. Stankis, do you have a signature page with you in your packet? Could I, could you leave one here with us?
I will.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Where I can pass it to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Preliminary West Test results. Mr. Wade.
Funny thing out on the way to the board meeting. It's actually, sorry, I was late. I was actually meeting with parents at a school. When Mr. Lampin asked me if he could put it on the agenda to talk about West Tests, I'd already sent 900 letters out to parents for school choice, and then Mr. Lampin got an email saying that it's embargoed till Wednesday. It's a little late since we've already sent the letters out. So, basically, what I'm going to tell you is not a whole lot other than we do. The good news is that two of our four schools that did not make AYP and the elementary schools made AYP this year. So, that's a good thing. Two schools still did not, and they are now schools of choice. So, I had to send letters out as required by federal law to those parents. I've had meetings with both schools' parents, so it's public knowledge, at least for those two schools, that they did not make AYP. Good thing is, though, in coming from the one meeting I just came from, that no parent chose to leave that school. And at the other school, I only had one parent that chose to leave the school. So, you can probably figure out.
Since it's public knowledge.
Well, it's only public to those two schools because they're the ones. French Creek and McCann Academy did not make AYP. Rock Cave and Tenerton, who did not make AYP, last year did. And then the other two, I'll make the other three elementary schools stay, also having made AYP. So, we're excited about those preliminary results. But I will do a formal presentation at the next board meeting if you wish. But it was kind of interesting after we done all this work. I was trying to do it because I did not want, if we were going to have any parents that chose to move their children, I did not want to wait until after school started because it's kind of, it does like explain to the parents, it's not really fair to the kids to have them in school for a week, and then the parent says, I want them. kids to have them in school for a week and then the parent says, I want them to move. And then they're uprooted and some counties didn't get the AYP results and they've already started school because they started earlier than us. So their kids are already in school and they're now getting ready to have those meetings to discuss school choice, which is required by law. And also Buchanan Academy will also be offering supplemental educational services, which is tutoring services that Title I is to pay for. I will be sending out letters to the parents, another letter, to the parents, giving them options as to what supplemental services are available. Most of it involves online computer tutoring services or something similar to Sylvan where the parents can take them there and the Title I pays the tuition for them to go till the money runs out. We've budgeted so much for that. So at that point then we'll be doing it. But I can give you more information on that at the next meeting. So I don't know, what other than.
The preliminary results are five out of our nine schools have made AYP, which is up from last year. So the improvement is there. And although Buchanan Academy, for instance, is on their third year, they're still making strides and they're still moving forward with that. But we did receive from the state superintendent an email the other day that at first it said we were going to release those at the end of last week and since we put it on the agenda. Received another one. It says not until Thursday is their anticipated date of release. We have a nine o'clock in the morning webinar with the folks from Charleston to talk about the AYP and the public release thereof. So we'll make that release and as soon as we have all those details, we'll get it out to you and the public.
Like I said, we'd only sent the letters out. So those two schools know exactly where they are, where they stand. So. And it was, it was good meeting, actually, both states' parents. That's a good thing to say.
And that preliminary data, even though, for instance, the middle school, once again, because of middle school, it's tough for middle schools, but their achievement levels continue to rise. As we move forth and as we've talked about before, the state is going to be sending in a waiver to the federal government and move towards an improvement law where we'll rate our schools based on the improvement that they made, not just a hard, fast score, which we think is the way to go because in education, we're all about our students learning and improving. So we're hopeful of that.
And what's kind of, what's kind of interesting is like being in French Creek this evening and talking to the parents, I probably had eight parents there. I didn't know if they really wanted to move their children. They came because it was an informational meeting. And we talked about what was going on at the school and what the school's doing to improve scores. And Mrs. Johnson, the principal, has been really working hard with the staff. They have been showing improvement, but not enough. Parents had some wonderful questions. They had some great suggestions, actually, that we're going to discuss. And about half the staff actually stayed to hear the, my presentation to the parents also. And I excused all the teachers because I didn't want parents to feel uncomfortable if they did want to move their child. So I told teachers to get out and the principal. And but at the end, none of them chose to move. They said, this is our school. This is our, we raised our kids here. This is our community. We want to stay here. It just says a lot for French Creek.
The school board here in front of you.
Oh, thanks.
All right, we'll move on to delegations.
Thank you for having me, Sealy. I guess I should first ask a question. Mr. Lampen, does the county have any kind of a policy on trying to keep like business local versus sending it out of the county, out of the state, whatever?
We have a, I don't know if it's an actual written policy that talks about Upsher County per se, but what we try to encourage our schools to do and anybody is to, is to purchase locally every time you can. And if things, all things are equal and we can, we can help our local merchants, we certainly.
Bruce, I ask, many of you probably already know me. If not, I own a gown shop called Crown &amp; Touch. And as of January last, this, well, this year right now, we moved it downtown onto North Canal Street. In addition to them getting the Crown &amp; Touch down in that neighborhood, the Market Bistro has since moved down there. But we've also been blessed in that we've got a couple new businesses in Buchanan. One of them would be Hibbit Sports, which is out past Walmart. I know a lot of people think the world ends there, but it really doesn't. If you go on out, you find a few other things. And the other thing would be a lady from Harrison County, Gabby Purnell, purchased Cheer One, which is gymnastics facility in downtown Buchanan. I know her because her daughter always used to come and get homecoming and prom gowns from me. Of course, her daughter's grown up and moved on now and she said I had to have something to do. Said, now, as I understand it, she has one gym maybe in Harrison County and then she opened the one here. In any case, the good thing is Buchanan is growing. The downside is the economy hasn't been that great. So those of us who are small businesses, we do struggle. And what makes it really hard for me, I was always raised when I was a child and they wanted us to sell stuff. My parents always sent me out to do it. I didn't, sometimes my dad would help, but nine times out of 10, I went out to do it. Therefore, when a kid comes in and asks me as a business person to donate, contribute, support, buy whatever, I always try to do it. It's real hard, however, when you've got someone coming in from a group or an organization and you know that that group or organization never does business locally. I've run into that. I'll give you a couple good examples. Knowing that being on the homecoming court is for some families a financial hardship. It's a tremendous honor, but it's also can be a hardship. Suddenly, you're faced with dressy clothes for parades and for the athletic field. You're faced with needing a gown for the coronation. And I think that's wonderful because it does teach the kids to dress up a little bit more. Plus, the dress clothes part, they're going to be able to use those items later. The problem is there would be an ideal opportunity for local businesses to make a little bit of money, but not when it all goes out of town. So several years ago, when I was still operating out on my own, I put together a letter, took it to the schools. And what it does is it congratulates the girls on making the court and it offers every single one of them $100 off the price of any evening gown. And it also offers them $50 off the price of any suit. Now, some people may be under the impression, well, but how much difference does that make? Yes, there are gowns out there and I'm not going to lie to you. The girls that do pageants, you can purchase gowns that run into the thousands of dollars. But for homecoming, the average homecoming dress would be probably between $150 and maybe $300. And that difference is based totally on the person's particular tastes. It's much like, and I, I'm going to pick on the ladies sitting up here, the three of you, it might be just like when you go to purchase a handbag. Some of you may be very price conscious and some of you may want that designer label. So again, it just depends on what your personal preference is. Anyway, took the letters up to the high school. Well, I was disappointed to find out that there were a couple situations at hand. Number one, we're up against a teacher and I don't know who she is. I deliberately told the kid that told me, I don't want to know. But we're up against a teacher who was actually handing out flyers promoting a gown shop in Morgantown. Well, you know, everybody's schedule's tight enough. So I mean, driving into the next county would be one thing, but that's asking them to drive more than an hour up the road to purchase what they can probably get here in Upsher County. The second thing we ran into was people saying, well, there's no need to look in Buchanan. You can't find anything here. Well, good heavens, if we all develop that attitude, there's not going to be any place to eat. There's not, basically, we're going to get up, we're going to go to work, we're going to go to school and that's all we're going to do in Buchanan because the businesses will all be gone. I talked to the manager at Hibbit Sports and they were disappointed because evidently, and I don't know how this works. I know nothing about athletics. I was what they used to call a band geek. But the manager at Hibbit Sports has been disappointed because they haven't even been asked to give a price on any of the shoes for any of the teams. Do, and I'm not being a smart aleck. I really don't know. I thought like the basketball team or the baseball team, I thought they all wore shoes that matched. Do they not do that anymore?
Some do, some do, some do not.
Where do they get the shoes?
Depends on the program. Some parents go out and get their own shoes and some are ordered as a group.
Okay. Well, I knew 100 years ago, back in the 80s, when my nephew played, the coach would usually say, this is the shoe, this is the brand, this is, and then nine times out of 10, they had a deal going with somebody and got them locally. But anyway, the manager at Hibbit Sports is extremely interested in having an opportunity and they've got a great program out there too. If you purchase the first time and you sign up for their free little point card, just like the Kroger Plus card, you get 20% off. And I have found that they carry all the same shoes you get in another county. You can just get them a little bit cheaper. Cheer One, I spoke with Gabby Purnell last night and she said she was kind of disappointed because evidently, and again, I was in band, I don't know this, but evidently the cheerleaders are required to take gymnastics. And she thought maybe by opening her facility here, kids wouldn't have to drive into another county and they've got the liability issue. Evidently, they're all still running to Harrison County. I guess what I'm asking is, is there anything that can be done to encourage the teachers, the parents, et cetera, to at least give those of us that are here a chance first? And maybe you'll find that we've got the same products. We might even have a better price. I know that when I have had people come in, if they are on a budget, being a small business, being local, I'll do everything I can to get them in under their budget. I'm sure a lot of these other places will too, but I think we ought to be utilizing our, our local resources first. So what can we do?
Well, as I told you, I'm a founder. What we, we do have a policy that, first of all, let me address the flyers that went out. And it would be the same holds true of your flyer if you chose to send one out. All those should come down to our office first to be sure that we review them and they meet our standards before they're sent out. So if someone is putting out a local flyer or for some, a flyer for someone else, that should go through the principal's office in ours. So we have to articulate that policy perhaps a little, a little bit better. As far as shoes for athletic teams and whatnot, many times that's up to the individual parent as to where. But I do, I do see your point on if there's a way to get things here locally. Now, I've not spoken to the gentleman and I don't know if the schools have from Hibbits. I don't know if they went up and talked to the school at all. But we certainly want to support our local businesses and you'd have our commitment on that. However, there are, there are contracts that are in place in some instances that just much the same as some of the things that we've been dealing with here that are renewable on a year-to-year basis. And we've just had that conversation with one school on a different shoe. So we would support and we encourage our people to go locally when they can. We do not have a policy that says you have to purchase from Buchanan merchants or Upsher County merchants first, but it is a philosophy that I think we all adhere to and would like to, and we'll work hard to make sure that word gets out.
One other thing I would suggest, and this again, may or may not affect my business. I know that usually it changes whichever teacher's in charge of homecoming, like at the school. I've heard the parents growling a little bit the last few years. It used to be when Pat Marsh did it, she was very thorough. And once, let's say she made the homecoming court, she'd be called in, she'd be given a letter. It would go to her parents telling them what was, what the parents were invited to, the schedule, et cetera. Pat would also take the time to mention to the parents what was suggested as far as their attire. A lot of these parents have no idea. They don't go to the ballgames. They don't know. And I've heard some of the parents say they would like to be given guidelines and suggestions on that too.
I think that's fair. And I also have to comment that we in the school system, the reason they come down to us is we cannot be an advertising agency for every business, whether it's a local business or else.
Right.
We do scrutinize those and we see what the benefit is for the student there. And you could have, Alyssa, you could have just as many people that want to go to your shop that don't want to go to your shop. So we can't be in a position and mandate that everybody go there, but certainly.
With the parents, the parents would appreciate guidelines as to for, like the fathers, we would suggest dress slacks, khakis, even stuff they could get at Walmart versus, because some people don't know, you see, past years, homecoming, we've seen everything on the ladies from cocktail dresses to denim because they didn't have any guidelines. I'm just saying that might be an idea too, to add a list of suggestions.
Well, I agree. We want to support our local businesses. And I, and I know we do have a couple of the sports teams that have gone to Hibbit in the last little bit. Maybe what we need to do is reiterate to the principals and those at the different schools what the guidelines are.
We will certainly do that. As far as getting homecoming guidelines out, those with all due honesty and respect, those are school issues that the, the, the school administration has to look at and see what they're going to accept and what they're not going to accept. And I will tell you from experience at Buchanan Upsher High School, when you do set those, those guidelines, you always have somebody that doesn't want to adhere to those guidelines. And then you put yourself in a position of saying, should that child be allowed to come into the homecoming dance? And then you go to the reasoning, well, it doesn't meet our standards. Should we send them home? And the other side of that is if mom and dad are willing to let them go out of the house that way. So I agree with the standards. I agree with the suggestions, but it's a little bit different than it used to be when a basketball coach said, everybody's going to wear Chuck Taylor Converse black. Those days, we don't have the authority to necessarily do that unless we're supplying those for the students. So it does go both ways, but I don't want to digress from the point you're making. We do support and we want our schools to support our local merchants as often as possible.
We have presented, makes it easier for us. If we follow the business, we can give donations.
Absolutely.
You know, a lot of the fact that we expect offices and especially local businesses to support us.
To donate.
We go to levy times, pay the extra taxes and we have always gone for donations. I don't think there'd be anything wrong with a letter generator on the board to every school principal.
I think that's a great idea.
Expressing our desire that they exhaust every effort to shop locally and spend locally.
I'll draft that letter and get it out to you all for, for you. It's a great idea.
I think we definitely want to support.
Well, and I mean, I'll give an example. When my husband and I went to buy a car, we used the USA Military Program. What we were wanting, we tried, we tried so hard to buy it locally. When we couldn't get it in Upsher County, I even called two other dealerships, two of the biggest in West Virginia. They didn't want to, they did not want to deal with the military program. Thus, we ended up in Virginia picking up our car. Well, there was a several thousand dollar difference. If you can't get it, if it's not here and if the price isn't there, I fully understand going someplace else. Just give us a shot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to board member comments.
I would say I think that the complication was very well explained. I believe that Lancelot's comments, I thought his presentation was well done, as was everyone's. It was well received also.
Thank you.
Have anything else? All right. Our next meeting date will be September 11th, seven o'clock here at Buchanan Academy. Thank you all. We're going to be going into executive session personnel. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session. West Virginia Code Section 69842A.
You're now in executive session.